Welcome to the August 3, 2017, meeting of the Isaguas City Council Land and Shore Committee. On the agenda tonight, we're going to start with the moratorium update, and then we are going to talk about the moratorium work plan update, and we're going to move on to the Old Town Subarea Plan update, get a preview of the Urban Schools Code Amendment that we expect to come forward in the next few weeks, and then we're going to talk very briefly at the end about the Central Isaguas Dashboard, and particularly about information that we have about mitigation fees collected in the Central Isaguas area, and some of the gaps in the data collection, and how we might be considering things in the future to close that gap in terms of software. So we will start off tonight with moratorium update by Keith Niven. Welcome, Keith.
Thank you. Good evening, committee. Welcome to cooler weather inside. So this first agenda item, there's actually two parts. First, we're going to do an update on the moratorium, which is kind of a preview for Monday's council meeting, which is the next hearing to consider either lifting or extending or modifying the existing moratorium. And then the second piece was a request by council member Polly to talk about some new population numbers that have come out of, it actually came from OFM through PSRC. So go ahead and do that. So as part of your agenda packet, which you don't have yet, there'll be a few of those conversations tonight, given that that's, actually goes out today or tomorrow. So what I did was, I went through and, on this first page, kind of gave you guys a visual timeline of the six moratorium work items, and kind of when we're expecting for them to be completed. And as you can see, parking is the yellow, is it yellow up there? Kind of yellow. We expect it to be done in August. There's a hearing on Monday to consider a piece that, the structured parking for retail, which was not part of what was considered by the Planning Policy Commission, but the expectation of staff is that we will finish up with parking in August. You can see that, you also had a presentation on the housing strategy, and there's a couple of implementation pieces that are being written up as code revisions right now. We expect that to be done in September. Architecture and Urban Design and Vertical Mixed Use in October, and then the district visions, we expect to be done with those in November. So what this memo does basically is each work item, I've listed, I gave you kind of a visual snippet, because we actually have brought all of these topics to the council at least once, and this is hopefully intended to refresh your memories on kind of some of the stuff that has come forward. But what I did was basically go through the process that has unfolded to this point, identify what's left, and then identified whether it's complete or not complete. And so I did that through all of the six work items. And then, at the end, what I did was, basically, did I do that? Oh, it's actually in the Agenda Bill. Okay, so that's, that's basically what this is. And then I provided the calendar of more detailed meetings that are left for each work item at the end of the memo. So that's, that's just kind of a quick overview of this. If you want to talk about what else we might be talking about on Monday, I can do that, but I'll go ahead and stop and see if there's any questions.
Questions?
I do. Keith, it's unclear to me about the housing strategy. What we heard the other night was, was very expansive during the committee, the whole meeting, and, and it's not, is there just a, is the plan for just a portion of that? Do you, and could you identify what portion of that?
Yes.
Is going to be complete in the timeframe you've just shown?
Yes. So, so there were nine strategies that were shared with the city council on, on Monday at the committee of the whole meeting. And of those nine strategies, many of them had an affordable housing component to them, some did not. Some were overall general housing strategies. So the, the conversation that we had, that I took away from that meeting was, there were a couple of them that were very tangible, and that could result in measurable changes in, immediately in the production of affordable housing. And one of those was to change the inclusionary requirement in Central Isaguas, and the other was to put together the code provisions that would allow the city to use multifamily tax exemption on projects that it wanted to. And so those two of the nine were moving forward because they were fairly black and white, I would say, in terms of what we can and can't do. Some of the other ones, I think what I heard from some of the council members was, there might be some more touches and conversations with the community before we actually bring final recommendations forward to the council. So, so what we're doing is kind of approaching this as maybe a multi-phased approach, where we would bring two things that clearly have an impact on the production of affordable housing to the council this year, I think by September, and then the rest of them would likely trail in October, and the implementation would go for, because this is intended to be an action plan, it's, it's expected to cover multiple years, that, that at least taking this first step seemed like a measurable step for us in terms of trying to get more affordable housing in our community.
Other question? Can that answer your question?
It does answer, and, and is that a question you want to bring before the council? That, that, or do you just accept that, that this two of nine, as Keith just clarified, they have, they have a clear impact on affordable housing?
I think what Keith's saying is that they're going to come back to the council with that proposal. Those are the codes that they're bringing forward, two of nine.
All right, we'll have a conversation then when they come back. Thanks.
Yeah.
So Keith, when we were talking about that strategy, I can't remember if it came up in front of the council or not, but one of the moratorium provisions was to deal with affordable housing. So do we have to have the code language on those two done before we can actually lift that aspect of the moratorium?
So that's at the council's discretion. So you guys, we will have those two pieces in front of you in September. The decision that you guys are making next week, there will be none of them over the goal line, so to speak. You could lift them. We have, we have tangible schedules and expected outcomes. The recommendation that's coming from the administration is to lift the moratorium by the end of the year, so in December, so December 31st. By then, they should all be done. And, and for housing, it would be including just these first two pieces, with staff working on the other seven as kind of implementation projects.
Other questions on that update? Then I was going to ask you to talk about the preview for Monday night and the recommendation, but you just, if there's more to that?
I don't, I don't, you know, I think that, I think the administration feels that there's a good probability that all six items will be accepted by the council by November. You know, so I think asking you to lift the moratorium at the end of the year seemed a reasonable ask. I think, you know, the, the administration would like to ask earlier, but I don't know that that's reasonable. So we felt like the end of the year made the most sense for us.
Okay. Any other questions for Keith on the update? All right, next item, the moratorium work plan update, specifically the Central Isaguas Architectural Review and Urban Design.
So we had Part B, if you remember. So Part B on that particular item was the, the new growth housing numbers, it was actually population numbers from OFM, and so I'm just going to put that up really quickly.
Oh, before we do the?
Yeah, it actually got stuck in here under moratorium. I'm not sure why, on the, on the agenda packet.
Okay.
So it seems like we need to do it now.
So I printed mine.
Because you know I follow the rules.
Mine came off of the city's website, actually, this morning, and it's not, it's not on here.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
So those aren't, that's not in the packet that I, well, sorry. The information might be in there, but the agenda's different.
Okay. So, so this is not intended to be a long?
Yeah, it's in here.
This is not intended to be a long agenda item?
That's fine.
So basically, what came out, I think it was last week, was some new population numbers from OFM. And Isaguas, and I apologize for the scale of this, but we're right here. So if you can see, this is cities with the greatest percent population growth from 2010 to 2017. We're this bar out here on the end. If you click on this link, it actually takes you to the numbers that generated this graph. And so I found that actually helpful. Also, so I did, I did actually graph us out. So those are the numbers, and I know the scale's too small for here, but it looks like this. We're in the middle of the chart, as you can see, but you can, if you hit that link, it'll bring up this table, once you type in Isaguas under city. But here's our graph, and this is, these are the numbers that came out of, that, that generated that 18% from the previous image. So I'm not expecting to really talk about this. I just, this was new data that came out, and I think the committee, since you guys had spent so much time on housing and population, thought that we would just go ahead and bring it up, bring it to the attention of the community. And if you have any follow-up kind of work items that you want Development Services to work on for y'all, we're, we're more than happy to do that, but, you know, we'll have to figure out when we could actually generate that work if there is something, an ask for this.
Yes.
Okay.
So it's not in our docket of work this year to talk about this under the comprehensive plan or anywhere else, but we are going to talk about a housing strategy. And is there some linkage between these two that in our housing strategy discussion, we should actually be talking about where we are with our growth management target that was set and with our future target? So is there, I guess, what are your thoughts on how and when we would use this data, and what are you thinking about doing with it?
So, super great question. I think, I mean, I think that there are definitely linkages between our growth and our need for housing, so that's, that clearly could be one of the pathways that we might want to incorporate this kind of data. You know, as we look at, you know, the land that we have available for housing, I think that's another kind of, and that's a comprehensive plan piece, so we could kind of, you know, make the ask that in the 2018 comp plan docket, that we can, we see if there's any reason why we would want to maybe either include new policies or consider other things that aren't currently in, like our housing, our housing section of the, the comp plan. So I think we can put some thought into that, and maybe get back with you, as opposed to trying to throw darts tonight, because I'm not sure what those are.
Okay, so can I make a comment, though?
Sure.
So when this came through in our email last week, the thing that jumped out at me is that currently in 2017, we have been asked to take, to increase our current zoning and, and density, and we've done it. And we've been asked twice this year, and once the council suggests, and the second time they said no. Last year, we talked about where all the density inland and shore, you created a figure, we talked about where all the remaining current density is, and the answer was, we don't know. Yet these requests keep coming through to add more density, and so there's, and now we're doing a housing strategy. And to me, this is kind of, we, it has to weave in there somehow, because next time someone comes and asks for an upzone again, or additional density, what kind of framework do we have to even talk about that? It seems like we're kind of missing a big piece of the housing story that should be part of the housing strategy by never ever kind of knowing, I mean, I think it was quite shocking to people to find out that in 2007, 2018, we're pretty much where we thought we'd be in 2031, and what's our plan? Talking about it, it seems like this is really important part of the story. And one last comment is that, compared to the city of Samamish, which feels like they're growing outrageously, you take out the annexation, and we actually built more units between 2010 and now than they did. So we are actually growing faster than the city of Samamish, just in units. So there's, there's just a lot here that I think the council needs to understand in order to make an informed housing strategy. So I don't, I don't know how it fits in, but it seems pretty important.
So Mary Lou and Paul, would you like to request that, at the next land and shore, maybe there's some ideas?
No.
That's in September? Ideas about possibility, possibly where, how and when we might use this data?
Yeah.
Sure.
I like that. Yeah, it's good.
Is that okay, Paul?
Yeah.
Okay.
I did want to share one, one other thing that I did share with Keith as well, a quick conversation before the start of the meeting, and just so you know, I, I think that the, in the packet, there's a chart, and it follows, it's the one that's called households. And it's, it has a line on there, it says 2018 housing targets reached, doesn't really say what the number is or anything, but one of the, when you look at the data, one of the things this doesn't include, that's a count of total, and it does, I don't, I'm, I'm having this conversation with Keith, I don't think it appropriately accounts for the annexation of the South Lake Samamish area. It's very, they're very clear that the units acquired that come into the city via annexation are not counting toward the, the target, the 5750 that we took on 2006, so they changed the baseline. And if indeed that's the case, then it kind of pushes that line that he has marked on 2000, 2018, out to around 2022. So we're just having that conversation to get clarity. I think it's important.
Okay. So you're saying that you think, sorry, that it may be assume some things and potentially a little misleading?
Yeah, it's data, and we just want it to be accurate.
Sure.
So we can, we can, I think revisit this in September, both on the base data, as well as how this data might get used in some of the work product that I think we already have queued up.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, now, architectural review and urban design?
Hi.
Hi, Lucy.
So I'm just going to start with a little bit of an overview of what we've done and where we are, and then we can talk about how we might want to use our time.
This is Lucy Sloman.
Lucy Sloman, Land Development Manager, DSD.
Thank you.
Apologies. So we have met six times with the Development Commission, and twice with the council at work sessions on the design manual. We have completed our draft design manual work with the Development Commission and the council. Last night, we took Council Chair Goodman's recommendation and went through a test case with Vail, and we also have been reviewing images of Isaguas buildings to discuss what might be appropriate for inclusion in the design manual. And then just in terms of what we have left, in August, we'll be working on preparing a final draft design manual to go to public hearing August 31st, meeting with Land and Shore, and then proposed adoption in October. So the two things that we thought might be worth discussing tonight, one was if you would like us to run through the test case that we did with Vail, it would take 10 or 15 minutes, if you were interested in seeing how that went as a way of sort of illustrating and training how that works. And then in terms of the image survey, the, I brought hard copies for the council members and the public, if you're interested in seeing that, and I also have a quick slideshow. So it's really up to the council, or you can ask questions that can have come up since the work session.
Would you like to hear about the test case?
Yes.
And see the presentation? Paul? Yep. Thanks. Me too. And you'll have to tell us where Vail, I don't know where Vail is.
What is Vail?
Yeah.
Thank you for reminding me. I made that mistake last night as well. I am going to just, ah, okay. Nevermind, I'm going to do this the quick and dirty way. So Vail, as a kind of quick reminder, is across the street from Atlas, at 7th and Locust, that was one of its earlier names. So here is Atlas, and Vail is in this greens area here, kind of across from At Work, and in front of Aegis. I'm going to leave this up in case we need it. So we really liked the suggestion that councilperson Goodman had made. We talked the next, I'm not just saying that. I mean, we really did like it. We thought it was such a great idea, and it was kind of a good reminder that we had talked about doing that as we were working on the design manual. And the commission really liked it, because we ended up getting through the chapters more quickly than we thought that we would. And so it was a question of, we've already scheduled this third meeting, what should we do with that? And so we, when the commission said, yes, we'd like you to do it, and I looked at Keith, and I said, we have a week, and he said, let's have Crandall or Rambla do it, which was a great idea, because it's good training for us to see how they would use it. It was good training for them to see how they would use it. They saw some things that they weren't sure were as clear as they'd like. And then it was great to have that conversation with the commission. So I was very lucky that yesterday, they went through the slideshow, so I took really good notes. So this is their value, they were kind of walking me through, and their overarching comments were not too bad, not an F, which I thought was interesting. So the first thing they did is they went through the checklist, and as you may remember, the document is divided into an architecture chapter and an urban design chapter. The red checks indicate where there are areas that need improvement. The building was probably designed more as a northwest contemporary building, because the design manual didn't exist. Crandall or Rambla picked an arts and crafts based on the size and height of the building, but their point by showing it as a northwest contemporary was that, that even if it was reviewed in terms of the style that had been selected by the applicant, it would still have some shortcomings relative to things that we have identified that we value. And then there were obviously some things that they identified in the urban design world. So they then used that as a way of sort of organizing their discussion. So in terms of massing, if you think about an arts and crafts building, it would not be modern, and it would not have a flat roof.
So, so this checklist is the one that the consultant prepared, as if the staff, which is what the staff would do to make a recommendation?
Exactly.
Okay.
So, so, and, and you may, let me just refresh your memory, that for each of the styles, there are four categories in which it's evaluated, massing, scale, materials, which includes walls, windows, doors, and roof, and colors. So they are going to run through those, and you'll, you'll see that piece. So in terms of massing, it's got a flat roof, it should have a hipped roof, it is missing balconies, and the composition is symmetrical, not asymmetrical, which you would expect with, or is required with arts and crafts. So they, just to remind you of what it looks like, this is the building as it was, with a flat roof, and the symmetrical composition, which they felt would have been more interesting if it had been asymmetrical. Then they went to materials. They said there were too many materials, some of the materials were inappropriate for an arts and crafts, and that part of the arts and crafts would be to have a heavy masonry base, which this building doesn't, since that wasn't its style. So some of the things that they were identifying, and I thought this was kind of interesting, was along with having too many buildings, some of the, I mean, too many materials, some of the materials, like the metal panel and the, metal panels and cement panels, are very flat. And with an arts and crafts, you're taking advantage of the sort of transition between materials and the types of materials and the installation to have subtle variations in planes, so you get a little shade and shadow, which makes an overall more interesting building. So that's where they saw, these materials wouldn't be appropriate for arts and crafts, and that you wouldn't get that result from those. Then they were windows. So arts and crafts would tend to have vertical windows, Vail's design is horizontal. The trim and detailing around the windows is, again, very modern, not more traditional, so it is missing that. Windows at Vail would either be fixed or casement, which is where it swings open. An arts and crafts window would be double hung, where the pieces slide, and vinyl windows. And we talked about this for quite a while. They want long-lasting durable materials, and they said they were concerned that not all vinyl windows meet that. And this is one thing that we're looking forward, now that we've gotten through the draft review, to have more conversations, because they've emphasized a lot of true materials, and we need to understand, does that mean you can't use hardy plank, or if it looks just like a wood material, that it's acceptable? Same with windows, if it's a wood-clad vinyl, if it's a vinyl-clad wood, are those acceptable? So we, we need to understand a little more about intent, but it's a, it's a great conversation to have. But their, their issue is that we need things that are permanent, quality, and long-lasting. So they're just highlighting some of those windows. Doors, door materials were not identified as part of the packet. You could assume certain things from looking at the plans, but the materials weren't specified. Color, this was very interesting. So earth tones were, are what is another component of the arts and craft style. They found this blue to be too bright, which was interesting, because I would think of this as kind of a gray-blue. But they don't think of blue as being an earth-tone color, and therefore it would not be appropriate. The white, which makes sense from a modern perspective, again, is appropriate in a modern building, but for a traditional building like arts and crafts, it should be a creamy, a sort of softer color, not a bright white. So then context. You may remember that a big part of, you know, well, it's a big part of our values, but a big part of what they were trying to address was the natural context, and how is the, how does the building respond? Because they provided a lot of, a lot of specifications about how you respond to the natural context. And there is a small, I think, class four stream between... And there is a small, I think, class-four stream between Vail and Safeway along the trail. So, the question there... They identified that there wasn't a landscape transition. The building materials, when you face that natural setting, should be more natural. The massing should step back, and the building should have this sort of... More of an orientation and gesture towards the natural area. So, they're identifying that there's not much of a landscape transition opportunity. The building would step back on this side at above four stories. That's another piece we want to get clarification because it would do that along the street as well. So, we wanted to know if you didn't have a natural element. If you had, for instance, a street on three sides, are you still stepping back the whole story or just along those three sides? So, this was really helpful in us just sort of understanding like what is clear and what And they had originally said, "Front doors facing the natural area." Now, we've talked to them, and they agree that where, for instance, you had a street on one side and a creek on the other, putting the front doors to the creek is impractical because we also don't want the back of the building facing the street. But that we need, you know, a very strong set of doors facing both. We want the building to address both things, not just the street, which is more the way the Central Isqwa standards are written now. Context. This is one that we're looking forward to talking a little bit more about, you know, where... How you do compatibility and how you do contrast. Obviously, Vail maybe has some sympathy with Atlas, but mainly contrasts the things that's around it. They pointed out that an arts and crafts building would be more respectful of the Aegis apartments that are next door because you'd have the slope... The roof lines and other elements. Right now, it feels like it is kind of dropped in. Then, the last two elements that they talked about were... They said... They said, literally used the word "picky." These are picky things. But, again, it was very helpful to have that conversation. There are units along here and here that are right near the trail. And they have a landscape area, and they were glad to see that. They thought that was appropriate. They said the word insufficient may be a little strong. But their point was that with these ghost plants, it's hard to know, are they like a good evergreen hedge? Is it a wall? When you have such proximity of residential units to the trail, even though people are choosing to live there and they obviously want to have a more sort of public, extroverted housing situation, you want some sense of privacy. You want some sense of, "This is public space and this is semi-public space." So that they would have wanted to know more about what that... What the ghost plants were and sort of how they would create a sense of privacy, given that this is, you know, living space right there with big windows. And then, the last thing was urban open space. They thought that this was this courtyard. Again, they said this was kind of a picky thing, but they felt like it was just not thought out well. There wasn't enough street furniture shown yet. It would be good to have known about bikes and benches. There was... One of the things they observed, we had observed, and through the process of our briefing response memo addressed, which was that these walls on both sides were blank. And we said, "That makes absolutely no sense. Those are residential units. This is an opportunity for windows or doors." Crandall or Rambla even suggested, you know, it said, "Are these live-work lofts or are these residential lofts?" And I said, "As far as we know, they're residential lofts." But they said it could be kind of... Had been interesting if these had had the opportunity for a café or a small business that could take advantage of that public space. And we agreed and had Vail address these areas. But overall, they just felt that this space was kind of arbitrary. And we agree that we don't have all the tools that we would like to deal with public spaces and to get a better program for how the spaces would be used.
Questions? Comments? Sure. It was really helpful for you to do it with an existing project. That really demonstrated what we're trying to do with the new architectural standards. So, that was an excellent way to present it. And did I hear you say earlier, too, that this was the same exercise the Development Commission went through?
We did it last night with them.
That's great.
Just the same thing we just did with you.
That's great. And when I watched the original video for this of the Development Commission, there were comments and concerns about not having the right tools to get it where they wanted. What were the comments like last night after going through this?
So, I would say they kind of fell into two big baskets. One was feeling like this is... I mean, being very excited to see the kinds of things that are coming out of it and feeling like this is going to give us better tools to get better buildings and to really address some of the concerns that we have. You know, frustrations that they've been feeling. Things come forward. We don't have these tools to say... To change it or redirect it. And so, looking forward to having better tools. I think the second set of comments was really around, "How's that going to work? What does that mean?" You know, just the kinds of, you know, beta testing that you need to do to be able to see, "Is this clear? Does this get what we want? What would happen if we're having to use this?" So, I have a nice list of follow-up questions to talk about with Crandall or Rambla, just to get clarifications and make sure we're understanding their intent. And so, it was a good exercise for staff as well.
And I think one other thing to add is, there was a conversation with the commission about, like any tool, you know, it's brand-new and you're going to learn things as you go. And so, part of it is recognizing that as we start to review different applications and start to say, "Hmm, that doesn't..." There wasn't enough clarity there. Or, "Gosh, this really would have been better if we could have done this, but maybe that piece wasn't included." So, I think there was an expectation that it was going to be somewhat evolving as it gets used. And we'll get better, you know, year after year as we kind of get more projects under our belt and use it that way.
I think one other thing I would add that I just thought of, because I forgot to put it in the presentation. Another big piece that we're talking about with the commission was, I think everyone agrees that natural areas are very important to the community and that we wanted better tools to address them. I think the question that we talked about a lot was, "Do you make the same kind of gestures for a class-four stream as you would a class-one or two-stream?" You know, are all natural areas created equal? Do we want to make the same level of gesture for those? Or do we want more tools for a more important open-space area than for maybe a more minor open-space area? We did not reach a conclusion, but it was a really good conversation.
Yeah, I'd like to pick up on that. Could you define class-four stream? Can you define that?
Well, it's based on whether it has fish or not, the water that runs through it, the size of it, the volume.
Well, that's what's considered when they classify. This one is pretty much a ditch. There's nothing flow... There's no sense of anything flowing in, anything flowing out. It's a little bit of a depression. It doesn't... It... If it serves a function, it's not really clear how... Where it's connected. So, it is kind of an interest... It is a good example to work through. It just ends at the sidewalk, and then it ends at the road at Newport Way. And any kind of movement of the water and the role that it plays... I mean, if it's... So, it's... So, that's why I ask about the definition of a class-four stream. I know "stream" is the word we use to define everything. And I just... So, I think the last point that you made was really good, and we should have that conversation. I could... Because this is a good example. Do we really want to expect the built environment to respect, or whatever word you used, engage this place like we would, like a class-one? I think that's a... I encourage that conversation. This one is pretty much... Is very extreme.
Well, I think what you're identifying is that there are things that to... To some people will seem like a ditch, but which are officially classified as a creek.
Mm-hmm.
And...
I think part of what's important for our consultants is they think that part of the value of this community is its connection to natural areas. And whether it's a ditch or... We had the same conversation with the Costco new office building that's in for pre-app now. And even though Costco doesn't have to go through this, they chose to actually have Crandall or Rambla look at their building. And so, they treated the face of that building next to the Pickering Pond similarly, saying, "Hey, this is an open space. It's green. People walk along it, and therefore, your building should recognize that." It may not want to orient to it. So, I think we have to figure out where that level of recognizing those open spaces and the importance of them come in.
And the third one that I would identify, because it, again, doesn't have an automatic classification, are slopes. They identified forested slopes over 10%. Isqwa Highlands uses 15 and doesn't make a distinction about whether it's forested or not. So, those are, you know, just really interesting questions about, are we... You know, what are we trying to make that gesture towards? And so, I think that's one of the things that we're going to have to spend some time understanding. You know, where are the 10% slopes? Where are the 15% slopes? You know, what does that... What would that do in terms of identifying buildings that would make that response? Because the way the design manual is written, anything within 150 feet, any lot that touches is touched within 150 feet, would use that as part of their design parameters.
And just to be clear, so, Vail is vested, and it's... So, there's no requirement. So, the arts and crafts was not... That was what the consultants would have suggested. Therefore, it graded it based upon the arts and crafts standards.
Yes.
What was the purpose of the checking of the urban core part of the check sheet as well? I noticed that there was... What was that assessment?
So, the point of doing that was to indicate that even if it had been reviewed in the style in which it was designed, it would have had a couple of elements, some of its characteristics that would have needed to be modified to comply with our northwest contemporary style.
And it is in the urban core?
It is not in the urban core.
It's south. It's just...
Right. Which is why they picked... It's just south. Exactly.
So, can staff replicate what the consultant did?
I think so.
Okay. Good. The notes certainly don't fit on that small little field that's in the form. I noticed you had everything up here on a PowerPoint. How are you... You know, if you're going to have multiple reviewers, I'm sure you'll figure out a way to manage that. But those notes were far more extensive than the one-inch-of-line that's on the form.
Well, and the one-inch-of-line on the form was to reference a condition. But we did talk about that with the commission because we've been using a somewhat more extensive checklist, not a full checklist, but a more extensive checklist with the Central Isqwa standards. And we talked about that this is a cover sheet, is great for both commissioners to fill out compared to what staff has done, for... To capture as a kind of overview what things we're going to be focusing on in our discussions. But that we will need a little more unpacked checklist that gives us more room to capture how it complies and why we're saying it doesn't comply, in the same way that you're seeing that additional text on the PowerPoint slides.
So, one of the concluding questions asked by the commission, which I thought was very insightful, was, "Is this tool going to get us better buildings?" And I think absolutely. You know, I think one of the things we heard about, you know, one of the criticisms of Atlas, whether you like that architecture or not, is that that building could be anywhere. It could be in Phoenix, in Orlando. It could be anywhere. And part of what this is doing is making architects think about what's important to this community and changing their design to at least recognize that. And I think that's a great step to make, you know, people go through because that's what our community said they want.
Sort of a question comment. So, that's great, the way you described it. The way you described the Development Commission's last comment, too, is, "Do we get better buildings?" So, this is the gap piece. We did this because a few buildings got constructed in a manner that not only the Development Commission didn't seem enthusiastic about, but the community didn't. And then, there's a moratorium. And during that time, there are 12 additional buildings that are going to be built in the former style and not under these new guidelines. Is it an interesting exercise for the owners of Vail to see what this exercise, this analysis said? And maybe have them decide on materials, if there's still an opportunity to not go in a slightly different direction so that the public over the next three years doesn't go, "So, now we're out of the moratorium," and they keep building the same thing? Is that... Is there an opportunity for that at all?
I don't... I'm going to look to Lucy because I don't know where they are in their permitting. I know... I don't know where they are in their permitting.
So, they... We're about to approve their Phase 1 of their site work. Their building permit and their site work are in for review. We have mentioned that we were doing this exercise because we didn't want them to be surprised. And I think they were curious, but I think it would probably have been more... And they offered to participate. And in the end, we decided no because we thought that this was not a situation in which we wanted them to feel like they had to defend the design because they designed consistent with the previous standards. So, you know, we could certainly make it available. My... I think they're happy with their design. So, I don't know how much they would be interested in changing it.
So, we sat down with Bob Power today because, if you remember, the development agreement for Gilman Lofts required them to go through this. So, they've also gone through this. So, they came in today with a response to the comments that they got from going through the checklist. And the building's significantly different than what you guys saw. But one of the things that they were asking me and Lucy about was, you know, because the color on the mini-storage has a significant amount of red in it. That will not be allowed in the new building because of the colors and the palette that's allowed for arts and crafts, which I think they chose, right? And so, one of the conversations we had is, would... Should they actually get rid of or change some of the red in the storage building? Because they are wanting to have some level of context compatibility between the two buildings. So, will it change? I don't know yet. They needed to check with the investors that they built that building for, who apparently red is big for them. So, they're going to... But they're going to explore it. So, it's leading to good conversations, even with at least one of the applicants that's already kind of through the pipe.
Other questions? I'm considering allowing brief public comment just because we're continuing to go through this exercise and refining what the end proposal will be to the council.
And so, before we do that, the one piece I would ask is, "Do you want to see the results of the image survey? Or would you like me to just give you copies? You can study it and let me know if you have questions."
And we would invite you guys... If you guys have buildings in Isqwa that we didn't include in our list of buildings, feel free to send them in. Because what we're doing is, you know, one of the conversations... Lucy kind of flew past this fairly quickly. One of the conversations was, "If we can populate the design manual with buildings we all know, that's better than ones from Portland." Right?
What's the image survey?
What?
What's the image survey?
So, I'll just show you very quickly. So, what we did was, we sent out a survey of buildings in Isqwa and said, "Do you like these buildings? And do they represent Isqwa?" We did not define what "like" meant. I started to, and then I thought, "That's a mistake. Everyone gets to decide for themselves." And so, basically, the buildings we put in were non-single-family, multiple stories, although there were some single stories, either civic, historic, Isqwa treasures, generally newer buildings, again. And the survey itself was grouped by part of town. What I've done is sort of grouped them by the rankings that they were given by the commissioners that responded. It's about five or six slides, and it's just up to you whether you would like to see them now or study it later.
I have some more comments about this topic. I want to make sure we have time for that as well.
We will. Yeah, we will.
I'd like to do it.
So, I have a request that we deal with.
So I have a request that we deal with this later.
Okay.
What do you think about?
Fine.
Okay.
Okay. So I'll just hand out copies that you have them.
Sure, thanks. Paul?
Thank you. In the, so the, in the, I don't really want to call it the checklist, but I think it's on the checklist. I mean, there's, there's the actual architectural design behind that. There are words like, that seem to be very subjective, words like harmony, for example. That's just one, it's easy to pull out. And, you know, how well are those, you know, documented in enough detail so that you, you know, the DC, the applicant, all are working off the same understanding?
So, so I'd answer that a couple ways. One is that part of the reason why we're including as many visual images as we are is to help define some of those things as best we can. The other piece is, we've asked our consultants to quantify some of those things wherever possible. So for example, the first draft we got said, you know, roofs in this architectural style will be steep. I'm like, okay, you know what? I don't want to be debating what steep means with an applicant, so tell me, tell me a pitch level, right? Is it, you know, 1 to 12, whatever? Give me, give me numbers that we can then gauge it against. So hopefully, a number of them will actually be quantified in the final document. You know, once we get past that, we're going to have to run this through the city attorney and have that same conversation about kind of the vague pieces of it, because my goal would be that none of it is vague, because vagueness gets us sued.
And when, but I will say that when we were getting ready to bring the building chapter edits forward to the council last year before the moratorium was enacted, and we had been reworking some of the color pieces, and we met with the city attorney, and I think that the point that Keith made is very important, which is, even if you say, you know, blue buildings are not allowed, or white buildings are required, or bright colors are not allowed, pictures are really essential unless you're going to adopt a color palette, which we would recommend against. And so I, I feel that if we get the right pictures and try and describe, improve the clarity somewhat, that we should be in a good place.
During the committee of the whole, the consultant made a com, a very interesting comment about height. And he brought it up purposely, because apparently that has been a conversation elsewhere, toward the end of his comments. And he actually made a suggestion that certain styles may be appropriate up to or below a certain height, yet they could be allowed in an area that's zoned for higher. And he pointed out the example of Isaguas style really is, has a max height of six stories, but it could be allowed in a zoning area that, up to 10 stories. I think that's a very interesting conversation. And what are we planning on doing about that? I would, where I, ultimately, I think the question, I think we should be asking is, this whole proposal is very heavy on kind of redefining some things we've already done, and I think that's okay, just creating two areas, right? There's the core area, then there's outside of the core area. Okay, okay. So now, style-wise, architectural-wise, you know, he's, he's kind of blending these together. I have a question about the various district visions in their state, and if, how much that's going to affect, or should it, or do we want it to affect those district visions? Then when you get into something like height, which is very important as well, now we're talking about architectural standards, which could be in conflict with what height is are allowed. I don't know what you're planning on doing with that, or if that's an active conversation, but at some point, I'm not sure, we're, we're, so I'm just going to identify these, that is a question right now, and I would like to have some follow-up. Another point too, I think this was very good to go over the Vail example. You've heard, you've used the phrase, at least at the committee of the whole, that it's within beta. I suggest that we actually define a very specific beta period, whether that be a period of time, or a certain number of projects, and not just leave that up. Because, because I loved your confidence when I asked you, can you replicate what the consultant did? Show me. Because, like you just, you, and then you answered the question, my question about harmony is like, you don't like ambiguity. I get it, I agree. So this is the time to tighten all of these down. Let's eliminate the ambiguity, and let's make sure that the intent of the consultant and how they've put that together, that we have the ability to get the same outcome. And, and those don't, you plan for that, especially what I would call a beta period. So my, you know, I don't know, is that six months? And if that means something, hey, we should retain them to do reviews, we should have that conversation. I'm not saying we should, but let's ask the question, have that conversation. The consultant also made an interesting comment about, which we didn't pick up on at the COW, about the relationship between these architectural standards and the existing development and design standards. Like, there should be a clear line, what goes in architecture, what goes over here, and let's not meld the two. And it's not clear to me, I didn't hear development and design standards too much in your presentation a moment ago, maybe that was intentional, but from those comments from the consultant, it occurred to me that it sounds like the developer, and you, and the Development Commission, I guess, would be considering both. And so I don't, where does, where's development and design play into this? I understand when it comes to material, not wanting to blend the two, and they should be distinct chapters or sections, what have you. But that's, that's unclear to me, the true relationship between the two. Those are my, those are the questions and comments I had. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Lou.
So one thing that it's going to take to get me over the finish line on this is that the little exercise that was done tonight with Vail, while I really like the exercise, the part that I am not looking forward to is, we're still going to be constructing some boxy-looking buildings that as people are going through town with the backdrop of the hills, they're going to be seeing things that don't look good against the hills. And so I don't know that it needs to be done as an exercise of a building, but I would like some special attention paid in the last presentation to how to convince, at least me, that we have the right standards, that when people raise their eyes to look up at the hills, the buildings in front complement, look beautiful, whatever, and not like boxes. Because I think we're going to build a few more boxes before we get to a better place. And so I really need to be convinced we've got that piece nailed down.
So I'm going to allow for some public comment, brief public comment, if, a couple of minutes. Connie?
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so I agree with Paul, I agree with Mary Lou. I think that the one component part that is, I'm afraid of, is that context will get lost, because while drainage ditch number four, that Paul is talking about, might look like nothing when it rains, it turns into something large. And what happened with Atlas is they took the water that included that drainage ditch and they undergrounded it, and because they were considering it less important than the natural area. And I don't want to head in a direction where we start burying our creeks again, because I don't think we can go there. So I really hesitate in devaluing any water body. That particular area is right next to a heavily-used trail that also connects with the Isaguas School District in a little bridge over it. And so in the end, for me, it was, would have been an opportunity to create a very nice public amenity, and it, in the old rules, it didn't. I'm not sure in the new rules that that opportunity is provided, but I would like to see the opportunity to get something better and more holistic. And so to me, every presentation is going to have to look 360 up and down at where that building is contextually before any decisions can be, be made. And so if I was to emphasize one point beyond the two you made, that's what it would be. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Steve?
So Steve Perera, and thank you for the excuse to come out of the heat, just to be here for this occasion. Appreciate it. So to me, maybe a little bit out of context, there's linkage to me between the height of the building and the design of the building, that we haven't talked about. One of the pieces is zoning and density. I think more chance to talk about that on Monday, but it can be meet the design, but if it's too big, it's too big. And I just want to make sure that gets touched on. To me, that's very much a moratorium issue. I won't beat up on that too much today, but there it is. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mel?
If you don't mind, Mel Morgan with the Development Commission. I think I speak on behalf of all the Development Commission members, and our gratitude for the chance to have some input on our toolkit. It's been very good, staff has been great. Keith and Lucy have done a great job with it. And a couple of things, I think this is more my personal opinion. One would be, I'm concerned about the limitation of the four styles outside of the urban core. They're fairly limited, I think, in a way, in terms of what we might end up with. And I'm not sure if we need to add a fifth, or have some more flexibility, but what I saw in the package concerned me a little bit in that way. The second would be that the, well, I'm sorry, in backing up, I think, and looking at the Vail, it's kind of like trying to turn an apple into an orange, in the things they were doing. And so with the Vail, we got some nice things like rooftop decks, which was really important to everybody, but if we said do a sloped roof, all of a sudden, you might lose that. So I think the, the other thing that's important is looking at those images. I've been fairly disappointed with the images that the consultant came up with in the packages that we've seen. And I think Lucy did a great job, Lucy and her staff, of gathering images in the city that most all of them, we thought were fairly good images, and I think would be a much better indication in the package of what we would be looking for compared to what they've come up with. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? I, um, I think Mel's comment, there had been something in the back of my mind about the styles, and I think Mel captured it. Wasn't, it seemed a little rigid, not sure there are enough. And so maybe that's something that the consultant, we can talk to the consultant about. And, wait, that was, Paul?
I did, and Mel also made a comment, reminded me one that I hadn't written down. So in the, in the presentation, what we saw last week, and this today too, there's a very high visual of the whole central area into two zones now. And then, then we have images that are down at the individual building level. And, and I don't know if the, how much, if this is really required, I just want to put it out there. It just seems like there are certain imaging in between that's missing. There's quite a bit, there's, there's, there's some very interesting, in the slide deck we saw last week, there's some interesting graphics overlaid, you know, showing the stream, it has arrows, and it's talking about some type of engagement with this, with the main stem, for example. But all I've seen are words. And, and, and then individual buildings, of course, in a completely different context. So you have a high-level maps, and we have words, and then pictures of individual buildings. And it's difficult for me, again, I think without, and maybe this has to be an artist's rendering, I don't know, but without more description, it's very high-level, what's being suggested. And I don't see how we're codifying that. And there are no images to help convey the concepts either. So do they need to be at the block level? Do we need to see something, what the, what a transition area looks like, or the way it engages with a natural feature like a stream or hillside? There's still, I think, a lot of room for interpretation in what's being proposed.
I think, follow-up comment is, there was a mention earlier, Keith, about, you know, vague or, you know, gray areas, you know, we get concerned because we don't want to be sued. So, so I guess I would like to say that in a different way about why we want things to be specific. You know, one of the reasons that we have a moratorium is because we are not prescriptive enough, so we are not getting what we, a vision, we're getting what we allow. And so I think that's the reason, I, you know, I don't think we, I don't want the public to think that we spend our time deliberating ways to make sure we're not getting, we're not going to get sued. I think the more important point is that we're trying to be prescriptive so that we can get what, what we want.
And-
Otherwise, we can't, if you require something that we're not authorized to require, then that's when you, that's when you get into legal trouble. And so we want to be able to require things that we have the authority to require, and that's in our code. So that's, so that's why we have the comments about why we want to be prescriptive and specific. I just want the public to be, you know, to clear about, you know, that, you know, we're not just going through this exercise to make sure we don't get sued, so.
So, and hopefully, my point was more towards being clear so we don't get sued, because being vague will get the city in trouble at the end of the day. So being clear, you're right, there's this, there's this predictability that we're looking for, because I think we felt like there was not enough kind of meat in the central Isaguas Plan standards to get us what we really were expecting. And so this adds a whole layer, which is going to be great.
Right.
But the wording has to be concise and specific, because that's a value to the applicants as well, right? Because then they know what it is, where our bar is, and what they have to design to. But then, for us as reviewers, there's clarity in how to review it, so that we're not seen as being-
Arbitrary.
Exactly.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Lucy.
You're welcome.
Moving on to Agenda Bill 7326, Old Town Subarea Plan Update, presented by Dave Faber.
So in case anyone's interested, the image handouts are right here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, hi. I'm going to call up the documents here. There it is. So thanks, and good to see you again. I'm Dave, David Faber with the Development Services Department. We are returning from June 7th, when we, we're at the Land Shore Committee meeting to talk about the Old Town Plan. And I'll give you a little reminder, and talk about a couple of things to talk about tonight. So at that meeting, we provided a draft plan, that was in your packet, and a couple tables that summarized topics. One was question and answer from the May work session with council, asked a bunch of questions, and we provided answers and ran through that. And then Table 2 had to do with, talk about where in the plan are various recommendations that we had heard through the vitality task force, through the council feedback, and the administration's work, and the public. So at the end of that discussion, we received feedback from the council and the public, and it sounded like, nice try, but you kind of missed the mark on that plan. So we have reworked that. I think one of the essence I heard is that it doesn't quite capture the essence or the feel, the special character of Old Town. And so we have regrouped, redesigned the plan, and come back. And, and tonight, we'd like to go through kind of two things. We've got a quick slideshow, and then we'll launch into the plan, propose to go page by page for the first couple of chapters. But first, a couple of slides to remind us why we're doing this, what is it, and the schedule. So why are we updating this now? I've talked about this before, but again, a reminder, so we've been talking about the Central Isaguas Plan tonight. When that was adopted in 2013, council and all said, let's refocus, we, we look back at Old Town. And so we did, and the task force worked on that, came up with a list of recommendations, kind of implementation items. And then we, we said to ourselves, well, wait a minute, before we implement these things, let's, let's stop and check back at the 1999 plan, and just confirm, is that still the vision that we want to plan towards? And, and so we launched into this about year-long process so far of updating the 1999, basically, Old Town Plan. So that whole plan talked about, basically, preserve Old Town, the commercial and the residential character, as well as kind of increasing some of the economic vitality along Front Street. We've heard that, again, this plan is to kind of maintain that original plan. That plan is, is kind of in a good place, let's continue to preserve Old Town. And so we have drafted- And so we have drafted the plan, and some key topics in the outreach are the three bullets at the bottom there. I'd say, we heard those originally in the 90s, preserving the residential and historic character, the commercial character, traffic is always an issue. I think making great neighborhoods and places and gathering spaces, we heard back then, we heard now. I think in this new plan, we're trying to emphasize that more and really, really talk about that. So that's, that's why we're doing this now. Some discussion about the timeline.
Can you go back one slide?
Uh huh.
So you have, so I read through this today, on first read, and so I certainly can't remember every single paragraph that I read.
Yeah.
But I, when you said here concisely, "We're updating this to preserve building character, manage traffic, and make great neighborhoods," is that in here, just like that?
It's not just like that in the plan, no.
Okay.
That's my quick summary of key issues in the plan.
Okay. And I guess I'm asking because in order, you have to get through a lot of words to find out why we're updating it. And so concise like that?
Yeah.
I think is good for the reader.
There's actually a statement like that in Section 1. It's right, the last sentence in the paragraph that's titled "Looking Forward." It says, "The Old Town Neighborhood Plan aims to preserve the small-town character of the Old Town while enhancing the vitality as a livable, sustainable, and balanced community, serving everyday essentials to residents, employees, and visitors." It's not the same. So actually, when you were saying that, I was thinking about this highlight, so.
So maybe I'm too literal. It's not exactly there, but it's nice to hear that you interpret that the feel of it is there.
Yeah. But if I'm a reader, and I'm, and somebody says, "Why are we doing this?" I remember that. I don't remember that.
Okay.
That's why, that's why. And it's not a right or wrong, it's just
It's not pulled out?
Yeah, it's just my comment. Yeah. Mary Lou?
So I had a bunch of general comments, but this is sort of a great example of it, is that I think we're still following that, the style of the older one. And it, this reads to me like a mini comp plan. And what I thought it would do, actually, is that whole first section, to me, one of the comments I wrote down was, it should just have that. You shouldn't have any of the rest of the stuff, it should just have that, and then move into how you do it. It's a lot, a lot of reading, it doesn't come across very action-oriented right now. And then I'll just save the rest for it, but I'm almost thinking, it's not like we have to go find that in the words to see if it's there. Like, that's all that should be there. Anyway, I have more detailed comments when we get to it.
Yeah, can we talk about that more?
Yeah.
Start Page 1 and go through it.
Yep.
And, and work on this. All right. So we want to talk about the process. So we're proposing a change, and we'll slow, go a little more deliberately through the plan, and we'll see how it goes. So on the top arrow is, was the original timeline. The revised timeline below adds more land and shore meetings throughout the summer and the fall, and the winter, if needed. That's this second and third quarters. And if some changes happen through this, and it makes sense to go back to PPC, because there's substantive changes, we've got a place for that. Originally, we're shooting for an August 7 adoption, this coming Monday. That's not going to happen, so, so maybe it'll happen by the end of the year. I know your plate's full with many things. This shows the first quarter of 2018. I think the good news, or kind of the interesting news, is that implementation in 2018 remains next year for both, both schedules. It might slide a little in 2018, but if we get a document adoption in early 2018, we can shift gears towards the implementation items and still kind of get on schedule. So to give some context, how does this plan fit in, again, to the whole big scheme of things? You mentioned comprehensive plans, so that's the comprehensive plan of the whole city, the big issues that cover topics throughout the city, growth, affordable housing, I'll say, traffic, things like that. And then the neighborhood plan is what we're working on. We've called it a sub-area plan, but it's a neighborhood plan. It's issues specific to Old Town. Right? Examples are the building character and the scale we've talked about, you know, what makes a great place, things like that. And then, I think we've, we started talking about this last time, and we want to emphasize tonight. So implementation, it's, it's really tempting to start talking about solutions right away. What are we going to do? But I think first, we need to settle on the slice in the middle. What, let's come to agreement, what are the vision, what are the goals and policies that we're all shooting towards? And then we go to Step 2, I guess, which is implementing that. And we can talk more as we go through the plan.
You might have to talk more closely to it.
Okay. So how does this plan work? Same format as last time, you have the overarching vision, then the little step below, the goals that go to the different topics, the environment, community, economic vitality, connectivity, mobility, those same goal topics remain. They've been kind of, we tried to make it more concise, eliminate some redundancy. Likewise, with the now-called strategies or setting the stage in, in planning talk, I guess those are policies, but more layperson's talk, setting the stage or strategies. And then implementation is a later step. Again, we can use some examples as we talk about the policies and goals, but trying to step back from that. What else do I want to say about this? That's kind of the overview, and we're ready to launch into the plan. You ready?
Sure.
Okay. So I'm going to switch to the document. That's not it. Right here. Got it. Thanks. So it's not even Page 1, it's the cover page. I don't think there was a photo last time, so if you had to pick a photo, I picked one. It's kind of, say, you know, what does it say? So if you have ideas, but if you say historic, character, I wrote down words of culture, it was turn of last century with the horses. The environment with the trees and the sky are in there. And then you've got a historic shell building, it's a small-scale building. There's just various things that represent perhaps the character of, of what we're shooting for. We continue saying thanks to all the people working in this project. The two chapters, so it's been reorganized a bit, so we start with the introduction, the many words we, I think were mentioned earlier. And we'll go to that, the framework, Chapter 2, kind of existing conditions, but also talking about key issues, the land use, the parks that are throughout in the facilities, and the parking issue that's always here. And then, and then Chapter 3 gets into the vision, the goals, and policies or strategies. There's three appendices. The Issaquah treasures are, you know, throughout Issaquah, but many, many of them are in Old Town. And that's spelled out. Architecture and urban design is a work in progress. You just had the discussion on architecture, urban design, and Central Issaquah. We'll see how that plays out in, in this one. And then, yes, there's been a lot of, of public outreach, and that's summarized again in the document. So what is this plan? I guess I've said some of this already. I don't want to read this to you tonight, but how can we do this? Do you want to have a, do you have questions, comments?
It seems to be a more understandable and more impactful document that some of the words have to go away. So I do kind of like, some of the suggestions that Stacy was making about going to bulleted points to say. What I had a hard time with when I read this piece was that I wasn't reading anything special or unique about Old Town. Like, a lot of the language in here could apply to another town somewhere, or another part of our town. And so for me, it didn't really talk about why Old Town got its own plan. It was still a little too general. It wasn't, you're not, it wasn't highlighting the uniqueness. The "why the update," if I'm a resident and I look at the vision, or the visioning document for 1999, and I look at 2017, I can tell you why we didn't get what we wanted, why we had a plan and didn't execute on it. It's because we have overwhelming congestion, we don't have standards for housing designs, we allow three stories. All of that piece is in, in here, and that, in the community comments, what you see, why we're not where we thought we would be, is because traffic has grown from 8,000 to 30,000, because small houses are getting torn down, and different styles of houses are getting built. More duplexes are showing up than single-family homes, there's not enough parking spots. That whole piece of it is why we want to do this, to make sure that we don't continue in the direction it's been going. And that I didn't see in here. And the way I just said it was all, the things we're missing, that language can be flipped around to be positive, to say that we, we do want to see single-family home construction, and, and we do want to keep it at, the community seems to prefer to have it at two stories. And we do want to have architectural standards for houses, not just for the mixed use. So that, that piece of the story isn't in here. Kind of reads like this is just an update of something that's been working all along, but I actually think we have to do some different things now, because we haven't grown our parking, we haven't dealt with the mobility issues or the traffic issues. So that was just a general comment on that first section, first
So I would generally agree with the wordiness. I want to be able to know, what is this plan? I want just a few sentences of what it is. Why the update, a few sentences why. And that's why I, that's why I made the comment I made earlier about the bullet I want to be able to get through this part fast. This is sort of, well, I've already said it. I, I generally agree with that. I will say that you took our, the feedback that we gave last time to heart, and I can tell that there's been a lot of thought put into this. And so I appreciate that very much.
Thanks.
And so sometimes the hardest work is to get the first draft out on paper. And so I really appreciate the work that was put into it.
Well, we want to check back today and see, did we get it or not? So we'll keep talking and see, keep adjusting here.
Yeah, comment made earlier did remind me, so in the sect rights there in "Why the Update," right in the middle, it says, "The area's varied desirability has driven up housing prices to the point where affordable housing is not possible for many people." Then it goes on, it mentions, really, and that's a, that's a good start on maybe the threats, or, or what has, what have, an honest assessment of where it is right now, and it's part of this assessment as to why. I mean, so, and it's in a section called "Why the Update." So, so, you know, can that, so I, you know, making that maybe pop out a little bit more, because it's, it's very motivational. So my gosh, look at there's, these are, these are where we're short, this is where we're weak, these are the threats to realizing the vision. You've captured some, I think it's, it can be, it could perhaps
Yeah.
A little bit more distinct.
Hard-hitting, distinct.
Mm-hmm.
And that, Paul's comment made me realize, putting the two together with what both of them said, when I read this, and I underlined the affordability part, affordable housing is not possible for many people, that's a citywide issue. So what's unique about, what's unique about Old Town? What's unique about raising the affordable housing issue in this area? Mary Lou?
So when we're talking about the housing piece, too, is, looking at the citizen comments, it seems that "why the update, why now," part of that story is that residents in the area are not particularly thrilled with what's happening with the housing stock. And one of the concerns that keeps seeming to pop up in their comments is that there's a lack of understanding as to how much capacity there is in Old Town. And if we're going to talk about, so for example, you know, I, I talk to people who don't know that you can do duplexes on lots, and their concern is that, well, all the houses on my street get torn down and turned into duplexes. And that didn't seem to come across here in terms of, yes, we have, I don't know, I'm throwing out a number, we have 500 housing units now in Old Town. The zoning would allow for 1,000 more. Is that the right number? What do we want them to look like, and where would they show up? That has to, like, that has to pop out of here in terms of what this area could look like in 15 years?
Mm-hmm.
And that's not in here right now. It's not in the story.
I want to follow up on that. So it's interesting, the old 1999, 1999 plan has very detailed discussion of these things. I think we consciously pulled them out of this one, saying, it's a lot, a lot of work. And if it's kind of all moved to the comprehensive plan, just the broad policy, the population topics and the growth things.
You should be able in three sentences, though, to say,
Uh huh.
"We have 500 housing units, zoning would allow 1,000 if everybody built a duplex." I mean, that is not a lot of words. That's kind of, and then if that's the right number in Old Town, it might look like this or that. But I, I read in the comments from the citizens a lot of concern over, "The housing stock is changing. I don't understand it. I don't know what's allowed. I don't know what it could look like." And that is three sentences, I think. It's, "Here's where we are, here's where we could be, and how would we get there? What would the stock look like?" I don't, I don't think it's asking for more than that.
And try and work on that.
Other comments on this page?
All right, let's move on. The next page continues, and then shifts gear and starts looking forward to the, the future. So, setting the stage and then looking forward. And I guess, that first paragraph under "Looking Forward," as I read that, and I had read the vision later in the document, kind of starts talking about this, kind of a vision statement, kind of talking about what, what are we looking forward here? So, "Special things, inviting, comfortable, walkable, you have to build in natural environments, preserve the small-town character," again, kind of talking about, this is what we're moving towards.
So I don't, I don't know that I got out of this "Looking Forward" section.
What I just said?
What? No, I, I understood that. That is a, this is what it is. It's not in a super, it's not said in a super exciting way. But I don't know that I got out of this "Looking Forward" section, what we're, where we're trying to, where are we trying to get to?
Okay.
Can I say something else?
All right.
Just a suggestion. What I thought we might see in "Looking Forward" is something like, you know, "Front Street Traffic." Front Street Traffic is minor local traffic road. Friday nights, all through the summer, Front Street closes down for festivals. There are more crosswalks on Front Street and Sunset than anywhere else in town. That, that's what I, I thought I would see. This is the area of town, Gilman Village excepted, where you come for small shops, small restaurants, a different kind of feeling. This is the area in town that has the most outdoor seating for creating an engaged and active street. That's what I thought this would say. And some of that is what comes out of those comments from the public. You can tell the people who did the survey and commented that they're actually thinking they're walking at Front and Sunset 15 years from now, and they're seeing more patios, and they're seeing less cars, or if it's Friday night, they're seeing no cars. And I thought that's how this would read.
That's helpful. Thanks. Other comments?
It just, it reads to me, this is a, "We like this place, we want to keep this place, we want to make it a little better." But I didn't see a vision for what it was going to be in 30 years. You know, I don't know what that vision is, but I didn't see it.
I just made one up.
I know. I'm just saying, I'm not, I'm not agreeing or disagreeing with that, but I agree that there needs to be a vision. I don't see it.
All right. I'm ready to move on to Chapter 2, if there's any more discussion. So the framework gets at some land use, parks and open space, and the parking issues. So this, kind of existing conditions, but sets, sets the stage of talking about the plan in Chapter 3, describes the land uses throughout Old Town, which I think we all kind of know. We've added a nice, well, a map, I hope you think it's nice, on the, on the right-hand side. Worked hard on there, so to highlight those neighborhoods, as well as the key community elements, public and semi-public, the Village Theater and the Fish Fish Chattery and, and all those kind of unique elements to Old Town that don't exist throughout downtown, throughout the rest of the city. Okay. The parks and open space, then focuses on that, you know, the issues, the, we're lucky to have two creeks framing the north and west sides of this down, this town, part of town. And then Confluence and Memorial Park are major parks that many other neighborhoods of this city don't have. So we're, we're lucky to have them. And then we have the existing Rehneer Trail linking the two. The future, we've identified over here in Front Street South, you know, coming soon, the city's slowly acquiring various properties opposite the, the downtown shopping center. I think a key point at the bottom of this doc, this paragraph, this page is that the Parks Plan is being worked on right now. So this, this generally talks about the Parks Elements and we're saying the Parks Plan is going to go into more detail on citywide parks as well as parks throughout Old Town. But we're recognizing Parks and Open Space are a great important element of, of Old Town here. I think later on, we'll talk about Memorial, Memorial Park, for example. It's, it has many amenities today. It, it has, I'd say, opportunity to grow and mature and thrive and have more activity there. That's mentioned here. It doesn't say what that's going to be. I think that's more towards implementation and more towards the park plan process. But this again acknowledges that and sets the stage.
Oh, did you have something?
Yeah, actually I did. I apologize. You moved on past the land use before I could.
Want to get back up?
I apologize, David, if you could.
Okay.
You mentioned, because you, you said something that you're trying to, a little bit trying to capture existing conditions. And I'm not sure the, the second, the middle paragraph does that sufficiently. Residential uses include the turn of the century, single-family and duplex homes. There has been quite a bit of, a number of units that have, you know, been, you know, rebuilds in the, in the Sunset area, both north and south of Sunset. And in that second sentence, it says newer multi-family with some single-family homes are found west of front along First Place and First Avenue. Well, there's, there's a number of multi-family, newer multi-family also in the, in the Sunset neighborhood as well. And I don't know, so, I mean, the fact that you have it in here is kind of, you're calling it out, but you're not really describing the whole area as accurately, if that was your intent. So I'm, I'm just calling you out on that, isn't that there, you might read this and think it's all turn of the century, single-family. Well, it's not.
No, it's not.
And that, the newer multi-family is in one location. Well, it's in multiple locations. And I think that's important because, because, you know, when we, the whole central Izua, well, the central Izua area plan, part of the high-level strategy is there is to help protect existing neighborhoods from redevelopment or force, or, you know, kind of the pressure of upzone and, and something like that. But this is, this is the one neighborhood that's experiencing the most transition right now, I think. I certainly don't, you don't see it in the, obviously the newer neighborhoods are as much as in Squawk. And this, so this is, so there is, this is under transition right now. And in a way, at least the perspective I see is that, you know, we're trying to catch this before it goes past a tipping point. And, and I think you tried to describe that existing, but you didn't do it sufficiently.
Okay.
I was going to say that, I guess the one comment I have about the entire chapter two is I'm not sure what, you know, you said this is, gives us the existing conditions. We call it the framework. I didn't, which is to me different than existing conditions. So I'm a little bit confused about the purpose for the entire chapter. And if we're going to present existing conditions, I think, I think it's way too long.
So I think the figures were very, very helpful. But I, I agree with Stacy. I'm very confused over what framework, what framework means versus existing conditions. So starting this chapter, I had thought the first thing that would show up is traffic congestion. And the reason I thought that would be the first section is because even when we went to talk about doing a streetscape plan, some council members were, no, no, not doing that until we fix traffic. We talked about a potential pedestrian scramble. Nope, that's impossible. Take that off the table until we deal with traffic. We talk about all different kinds of things and throw them out immediately because of traffic. And so the 30,000 cars that are on there today are killing it. They're killing Old Town. And so it should be the first thing we talk about and the top thing we talk about. And that came across in the resident comments as well. Congestion, traffic congestion first, and then building stock in terms of, you know, do we have the right design standards? And I heard more concern for residential than commercial. But we've got to start with the traffic congestion because it is the, it just kills everything. And so that has to be in here and, and it can have a little background of why it got to the way it did. But if we don't have a way to deal with it in this plan, there's no point in writing the plan because we're just not going to, we're not going to get anywhere. So congestion, traffic, existing uses, whatever you call it, has to be number one. It's like the big, big thing.
And you'd see that in this chapter.
Well, I, I think if, I think if you're going to start with the conditions on the ground.
Yeah.
It's traffic congestion. Top of the, the number one reason why this neighborhood is feeling pressure right now is traffic congestion. It's killing that area. It's harmful to the businesses. It's harmful to the people who sit outside and eat food with idling cars. It's just killing us.
All right. All right. So, okay, that's good stuff. Move, so we're talking Parks and Open Space. Any other comments about that? I guess one, one comment I've heard of, from some is that, so maybe what's missing or what's, what's shown in the land use map is the community facilities. And when you look at Parks and Open Space and all the places where people gather, that's not shown on this map. And that, you know, the pool and the community center, these, they're indoor parks, for example. And perhaps we can show those things and how it all comes together as one on this map. So we can think about that. The third topic in this chapter talks about parking. So we did not talk about traffic. We did talk about parking.
Right.
And this, this is pulled right out of the executive summary of the 2012 parking study that we worked on and then presented to council a couple of years ago.
The first bullet point item, I didn't understand it at all. I didn't understand what you were trying to tell me. There are hotspots of full or moderate capacity parking? I have no idea what that means. So, and you don't need to tell me tonight what it means. I can just.
There's not enough parking there.
Okay. So I have no idea. I don't know if it means that they're full all the time. I don't know what it means. So.
Well, they're, they're at or over capacity.
Yeah. I also think there is not a recognition in here that, so we talk about the parking studies we have done, and that there is a perception that there is less parking available downtown than there is. At least anecdotally and maybe factually, we do have more parking downtown from people who are coming here from other parts of the city or coming here from outside of the city to park all day long to take transit and work elsewhere. I think we need to start recognizing that in some way. We're starting to get a lot of comments from folks about parking issues. We heard that at this very committee a couple of months ago. And so I was, if I'm a citizen reading this, there is a perception that there is less parking available downtown than there is. To me, that reads that your perception is not true, which, and I don't like to be told that as a citizen. And I, and I actually think that we are, we now have less parking available downtown just for the reasons that I mentioned.
Okay.
I guess that was the one thing I thought I would see in here too, is that there, there is a perception, not only parking strat, parking shortages, but that we currently do zero enforcement. And that based on, over by Confluence Park, there'll be no event in the park during the day. All parking spots are full and they're full for eight hours. And so it's not just in Old Town. But if this is a place that people are thinking they can't come down and enjoy because of lack of parking, the lack of enforcement just makes that all much worse. And that really should show up in here.
So that talks about framework. So we're talking about kind of existing conditions or what's going on today. And then later on, it goes to goals and policies. And we talk about parking there. We can be more specific if we, if we're not.
I think the lack of enforcement is an existing condition.
Okay.
It's not a strategy or something.
Yeah.
It's, it's a fact.
It's what's happening right now.
And increased parking pressures.
What's not being enforced, just to be clear, what's, what laws are not being enforced?
Well, there are no laws that I'm aware of.
There are, there are four-hour limited parking areas all over town that aren't signed, but they are, and they're not enforced. We don't have parking enforcement officers.
No, we're not enforcing them for sure. No.
So I, let me, so I, I think the comments we've heard from people are that, at least my understanding from what we had this discussion a couple of months ago from the comments where parking enforcement is a topic we may need to take up because of the parking pressures. And we do have probably some authority to do some parking enforcement. I'm not sure if we have in the code to do that, what we need to do, the parking enforcement that some people think we should be doing. Just because we have a police force doesn't mean we don't ticket people. You have to have the authority.
Or the resources to do it too, right?
Well, yeah, resources, but you also have to have the authority. You have to have parking fines. You have to have parking rules. I don't know that we're equipped to do the enforcement that people are starting to talk about, that we may, that, that, making comments to us that we may need to think about as a topic.
So that's an example of stepping towards implementation. So we'd adopt a policy, right? Address long-term parking downtown and then adopt and implement that. Okay. Well, that's chapters one and two.
Okay.
Thank you very much. We can keep going if you like, but we were planning to get there.
Okay.
If you'd like to give feedback further on, it would help us.
Okay. Since we are still cultivating this plan, I guess I'll ask if people, do you mind if I ask for public comment? Public comment briefly, if anybody has any comments? Steve?
Hi, thanks. So several thoughts. In the presentation, I had Old Town, both with an E and without an E. So I don't know if that means the administration is recommending the E be dropped or not. I'd like to see consistency, obviously with the E is my preference. It talked, another point was, it talked about maybe it could, it would need to come back. And there's no criteria that I hear who determines what determines whether it needs to come back. So I'd like to, if we need more public feedback, we'll get that, what determines whether or not we need more public comment or feedback. The next thought was, I thought this would talk about more implementation, not just kind of a policy overview. So I talked, I'd like to see the implementation piece move forward, not just as a vision. And if anything, I would like to see the moratorium continue to apply to the Old Town neighborhood beyond the current time zone. I would also like to look at extending the Old Town neighborhood to include Old Ten, to include Balms and XXX that aren't currently part of the Old Town, that people certainly think are part of Old Town, to downzone those, to not allow higher-density buildings. I would also talk about, like I talked about the implementation, we are losing that single, that small-town lot, small-town house. And again, if that's implementation and not having things like combining lots, that needs to move forward sooner rather than later. Keep that Old Town feeling, to keep that pressure, that, that sense. I think I also heard talked about having, and maybe this is implementation, talks about the, like a green wall instead of having green trees that were kind of in the pictures and aren't, or haven't been replanted yet, that were supposedly going to be part of the plan. So when's that going to be part of the plan? And I'm kind of against the green walls and having a higher density or, or impervious service, service in that area. So just want to put that output, input there. Thanks.
Thank you.
Parking enforcement. Thank you for bringing that up again. Hope it's part of the budget process. You know, frustration I have is those three-story buildings. And if we keep going and going in this plan, we're going to keep having those three-story buildings, which I don't think are the appropriate, I'm not against duplexes. There's some great beautiful duplexes that are really nice in the downtown area. It's the monster three-story ones that are the problem, I think. And it, the, the percentages that you saw with the pictures in the material that you got in tonight's packet or whatever, is real clear what people like and what they don't like. And it's not necessarily a single-family duplex. It's type of duplexed or oversized buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
Along with traffic, and nothing really came up about pedestrians and bicycles. And that's one of the things, you know, that I heard during the public comment was, you know, better pedestrians and more priority given towards pedestrians so they all walk. You know, the signals being, you know, the, trying to reduce the traffic on front so it's more neighborly and a friendlier place. Because no one wants to go down there and sit outside and have dinner if all they're going to be doing is, is sniffing the emissions from the cars that are sitting there trying to get through town. So changing the whole downtown area, I think, is part of it when you're talking about traffic, is reducing that. The other thing I heard about going to the community conferences is we also, the citizens said, is, is working more closely with the school district. And they're a major player in this, but yet there's no place in here that they're really talked about. And how can we partner with them to get more activities occurring there, maybe more utilization of, you know, their amenities? Because there, it's not a lot of open space for people to play in the Old Town area. And so maybe, and part of this vision is sitting down and working with the school district to see how they fit into this plan, I think would be appropriate going forward.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Moving on, Urban Schools Code Amendment Preview, information only.
Who's presenting?
All right. So there is currently some proposed code amendments moving forward relating to proposed changes to community facilities, facilities for primarily schools. And this will be an agenda bill that will come before the city council shortly. I think it might be on the council docket for the seventh to be referred to land and shore. But for tonight, we're going to do a, we're going to do kind of a quick overview, well, hopefully quick, we'll see, a quick overview to talk about the high points and see, see if there's any thoughts. So, all right. So the proposed amendments, what we're talking about is proposed changes for schools. Initially, and I'm going to do this a little bit ad lib, since we've gone through Planning Policy Commission, I'm going to represent, I think, where we are today, which is in a little bit different space than where we started. Where we started was actually proposing an amendment to CFF overall, which would then apply to both schools and municipal buildings, which is why the, the notice went out to everybody within 300 feet of anything zoned CFF and not just school properties. within 300 feet of anything zoned CFF and not just school properties, which is why it went out to as many parties as it did. So clearly, the feedback we got back at Planning Policy Commission was that that added a level of complexity to this, that was just kind of, it was beyond where it needed to be right now. We're not planning to build any new facilities, we can always talk about municipal facilities another day. And so where we are now and what's coming before the council is to change CFF for schools only. And primarily, why and why now is because we have habitually amended our standards in the city code to accommodate the needs of the school district, right? The way that the CFF zone reads is basically you are capped at the lowest parameters of the surrounding zoning, all right? So if the surrounding zone to a school is single-family and only allows a 30-foot-tall building, two and a half floors, that's all they could do. And so what they've done historically is said, well, you know, our buildings need to be bigger than that, or our setbacks need to be adjusted, or things like that, and that has been basically approved, because that's what they've needed to build the schools that we currently have in our community. And so what this is doing is actually truing up the needs to the code, and it's happening now because they have the need to build four new schools. And so I think there's a reason why it's happening now, and there's a purpose for why it's happening now. So rather than guess what standards that we thought they needed, because we would probably guess wrong, we asked them to tell us what they think they need. So they submitted a letter, and so that's an attachment to the agenda bill, which proposes some standards for urban schools, all right? Primarily, it's focusing on building heights, changing the impervious limits, requiring structured parking, news to you guys, sorry, encourage, that wasn't in their letter, but we could talk about that, encouraging more efficient site and building designs, and recognizing tree retention on smaller sites will be difficult. So that's why we're doing this. This is timeline, I'm going to pass that, and this is probably less than super legible. So let me kind of go through this as best I can. So as we talked about this with Planning Commission, there were a couple places where there was not agreement, and I'll go through those so you guys can understand that. Primarily, they agreed with the setbacks. What we talked about is also establishing that it's a Level III review. That means it goes to Development Commission, because we thought any new school should have an opportunity for a public engagement, and that's through Development Commission is the best tool for that. That was all fine. FAR, no issues with building height, no issues with, impervious surface was our first kind of stumbling block. Right now, Community Facilities, Facility says that your maximum impervious limit is 50% of the total property. And what the administration proposed was 90. And what, where it landed with Planning Policy Commission is 75. So we, there's reasons why we suggested 90. I'm not sure, so that was beyond the comfort level of Planning Policy Commission, but I'm not sure there was a lot of conversation about why they picked 75. Maybe they just split the difference. Tree retention was the other big conversation. What we proposed was allowing the schools to go to, to be able to use the Central Issaquah Tree Code, as opposed to the standard city tree code, because we have multiple codes, depending on where you are. And the reason for that is, the whole idea here is we're shrinking down the size of the school and the property needed to fit that school on. And as you do that, they still have a building, they still have parking, they still have a play area, and what's left is probably less room for trees. And the big difference between Central Issaquah Tree Code and kind of the tree code in the rest of the city is that Central Issaquah Tree Code would allow you to reduce the trees below 50% of what's required to start with. And ultimately, it would allow you to replant if you can't preserve them in place, or you could potentially pay into a tree fund. So it gives you choices, it gives you flexibility, but it recognizes that all of this is happening on a smaller piece of property. And that's one of the reasons why we later added the requirement for structured parking, one, because of where council was in the conversation about structured parking in the rest of Central Issaquah, and recognizing that that's kind of a perspective that you guys are kind of showing to us that's out there. But there's an unintended consequence if you don't require it here, and that is you're allowing reduced setbacks, you're allowing taller buildings, it's not to leave more of the property available to put a surface parking lot. And so as we thought about kind of unintended consequences, requiring structured parking, at least a portion of, on schools seemed to make sense for us. So that's kind of the big overview. There's a lot of, so the rationale for why staff proposed certain things that are maybe not coming in alignment with PPC is in the agenda bill that you guys will be able to read. Hopefully, it's concise and makes sense, but that's kind of, that's what I got. Questions?
Because we don't have an agenda bill before us, and because we don't have the details and the PPC review and all of that, it seems to me like the appropriate thing to do would be for committee members to ask questions, not necessarily for answers tonight, but things that Keith can take back as knowing we're curious about. I think asking about details of what's in the agenda bill is probably beyond what we need to do tonight, because we don't have it, we don't have the information. So that would be my suggestion. I entertain feedback from you guys. Okay, all right. Questions? Go ahead.
So Keith, I'd sent you an email, I think, a week or so ago. Oh, I send you a lot of emails. One that talked about stepping back and looking at several things that are now coming before council at once. And in particular with this code amendment, we usually don't write code without having our comprehensive plan language done, and I went and read the comprehensive plan language for schools, and it doesn't feed down into what you're talking here. And so we have a big gap, meaning that we're taking a new direction with school planning, and actually sounds like a cooperative new direction, which is fantastic, but I'm having a hard time thinking I could sit down and process code. When we had our joint meeting last year, we talked about a vision for what a different kind of school would look like, yet we never, ever went back and looked at our comp plan, and that should have been a logical step for us, it should have been on our docket, it wasn't, and now we're jumping to code. And so for me to look at it, I feel like I'm missing a huge piece that I would use to evaluate whether I think we've got the code nailed down the way it should be.
Sure. Totally agree with you. What I would, what I would like to invite you to do is take a look at the comp plan policies that staff identified in the agenda bill. If you feel, after you read those particular policies, if you still feel like we're missing a piece.
Are they revised policy pieces? Because I thought I sent you a marked-up version of the comp plan. Maybe it went to Annalise.
It did not go to me, I don't think.
Okay, so you heard your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else right now, Mary Lou?
Just, I'd like a little more explanation of why we would use any code from Central Issaquah Plan in any other area of the city, because I don't know that I agree with that. Don't need to hear it today, but Central Issaquah, totally different situation than the Highlands than anywhere else, so I'd need to understand that better.
Paul? Okay, so.
Oh, nothing, sorry.
So I'm still confused, and I think it's because the very, one of the very first things you talked about was the history with this, building schools, and that we were, we habitually sort of, I don't know, bend the rule is not the right, is not the right term, but we habitually amended, you know, allowed variances, administrative changes, modifications, whatever. Habitually did that so that we could accommodate schools. But then, at the same time, we're talking about different kinds of schools, you know, different types of schools. So I know we've used the word urban before, I think we're just talking about different types of schools. So I would like to know what, if we are truing up the code, then what are we truing up to match that, what we've, you know, been habitually doing? So I'm just still super confused with what we're trying, I'm not quite sure we're actually truing up the code. I think we're trying to create an opportunity for us to build a different type of school, but that's my question. So I would like some background on that, and show me what we've been doing habitually that we need to fix, because if we're doing it every time, we might as well fix it.
Right.
But if we're not, then why are we doing it? So, anyway, that's my question.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else? Right.
Are you, public or no public?
No, we don't have an agenda bill in front of us for us to even accept public comment. So, next on the, what, Paul?
No, I thought you were going to allow public comment.
Well, so my thought is no, because we don't have an agenda bill in front of us, it's a preview of an agenda bill we're going to get. I think our time is, public comment will be more helpful to us, I think, if we actually have an agenda bill before us that we're going to be talking about. I think we will, I think we will get public comment on what's been talked about at PPC, and that's my thought.
This represents an opportunity to get more public comment.
Sure, it does, but I don't even know what the agenda bill is going to say, so I don't know that it's helpful to me. So. But if you guys want to, we can.
I was fine with just asking questions tonight, that's fine.
I mean, there's material here that, I mean, that, what was put up there, I mean, that was material information, and we're, this is a public meeting.
It's a committee meeting.
Sure, we can have public comment, it's fine, we don't.
I know, it's a committee meeting.
If, it would be helpful if we had public comment that was about the information that we received tonight. Comments?
All for urban schools, real urban schools, you know, I think it's more than a 65-foot building, but one concern I have is the CFF is often right up against, or potentially right up against, CFO, the open space, and you get right into the whole danger trees and all of those issues. So if you're going to be going right up against these open-space areas, those open-space areas are going to end up being threatened, because the trees are going to fall down, and we got kids there and all of that. So these, there's some considerations need to be taken about adjoining uses or houses right next to a 65-foot school.
Thanks.
How do I get it? How do I get this stick working, you know?
Can I see for a second, Steve?
Yeah.
So we have Steve Crawford, Sequoia School District.
Steve Crawford, Director of Capital Projects, Sequoia School District.
I'm going to ask you to be brief with your presentation.
Yep.
Thanks.
So we really just wanted to talk tonight a little bit about the need for the zoning revisions as it pertains to impervious area. So Hilton Garden Inn, impervious area, Atlas Apartments, high-impervious area, Safeway Parking Lot, and any other parking lot, high-impervious area, Sand Play Field in an elementary school, it's impervious area. Baseball field, it's impervious area, because we have underdrains to increase the playability of these fields. Football, soccer, lacrosse field, that's impervious area. So if you're looking at an elementary site, you got one to one and a quarter acres of a playfield. On a five-acre site, it's 20% of the total site area, on a seven-acre, it's 14%. If you look at a middle school, football field, soccer, et cetera, and a softball field for program requirements, it's a little over five acres, and on a 15- to 16-acre compressed site, that's 30% to 33% of the total area. If you look at a high school with the fields that are required there, there's about 8.4 acres, and on a compressed site, that's 28% to 33% of the total. So if you add a 10% to a 90% impervious area allowance, you're really looking at a 24% to 43% open area for space that's used for recreational purposes. That's where the 90% came from, because it's not really just 90%, we're not building out to the curb line all the way around. A lot of open space it provides for community recreation. We'll talk about structured parking, just real briefly. If you looked at any of the two concept plans that were proposed for the Hilltop, there's a really high percentage of structured parking, because when we compact the site, that becomes something that's a necessary element of the design of the project. But the trade-off there is that we buy less land, it helps to mitigate the cost of the parking. So that becomes a reasonably cost-effective solution, and they go hand in hand.
Thank you. Anybody else? Steve?
I do have input on particulars, but I'll hold off on those until we get to that point. I guess I just don't understand, from an overview perspective, coming forward with a proposal like this that talks about changing CFF to be designated as an urban site where we didn't plan to have urban growth and development, it seems to be ham-handed way to try to involve the community. It's not getting community involvement and buy-in, it's, could have been well-written, better in advance to anticipate how we as a community feel about what we want our city to be. So to just say, to get, to allow the school district to say, anything that's zoned CFF can become an urban site is too broad of a leverage. I'm hoping, again, the legislative branch will fine-tune that, but it could have been done much better with community involvement and buy-in, when we already seem to be a community that supports our schools. Just asking everybody involved to keep that in mind, the school district, legislative branch, administrative branch, and the citizens. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Keith?
Thank you, I didn't, I know you weren't planning on taking public comment, so. Jay Cooper, Chief Financial Operating Officer, Sequoia School District, good to see two mayoral candidates in the room, appreciate that. That being said, we're, these code amendments are crucial to us to be able to cite any future schools within your boundaries. I was very clear to the PPC, and Keith was rather benevolent, because he's a staff member of the city on why they chose 75%. I had no clue, they said they didn't really have a grounded reason, and they just picked the number. So I want you to all know that, as an outsider, I saw them struggle with that, and they just said, well, 75 sounds good. We have a rational basis for our request, put forward to you. And the decision that you ultimately make on the code and the annexation, which is a future topic, will have a dramatic impact on levels of service in the city. I know your comp plan talks about levels of service throughout. The school portion is a one paragraph, Mary Lou, and it says we're going to coordinate, just as you all pledged to us during the work study last year about increasing our ability and conforming your code to what we actually need. So that's what I'm imploring you to do. I'm not going to hide the ball from any of my electeds in the city council. We want to cite schools in Issaquah, we want to be able to do it with the least amount of expense to our joint taxpayers, so we won't acquire the least amount of property possible, and we want the same codes that are sprinkled throughout the city. And we want the same codes that are sprinkled throughout the city. Costco's dense development, Central Issaquah plan, and you're right, you grant variances most of the time, but however, there's a lot of risk for us when we acquire multimillion dollars worth of property, and we have to rely on a variance to make sure that we can actually cite a school. So that's a lot of taxpayer money to burn on a potential variance, so that's my request to you.
Thank you, Jake. Okay. Anybody else? Seeing none. The last item on our agenda is Central Issaquah Dashboard, and it's actually just one specific page that would be part of the dashboard. Keith, you can give a...
I drew the short straw on this one, too.
Brief history, or I can give a brief history about why it's there.
You know, I don't know, cost-saving measures. All right. So this conversation started with this. We've taken in apparently $1.75 million in impact fees from 2013 to 2016 within Central Issaquah. And the question, which seemed like a very simple one, and a mere six months ago, was...
I was reminded, I was reminded that I actually asked for the information at last budget period, so it's been almost a year.
Not in Central Issaquah, but in general.
Yes, in general.
All right. So, so what seemed like a very innocent and easy question to answer has turned into a labyrinth of difficulties in coming up with, with an answer. But I think we're hopefully close to at least a partial answer, and then there'll be an answer for why the answer is not complete. So, so this was, this was part of the dashboard, and which is, just to park this for a second and say, you know, the dashboard's doing what the dashboard's supposed to, which is to kind of trigger some questions and some conversations. And so for that end, I think it's being very successful. So this, I don't know if you can see this or not. If you not, I have 11 by 17 hard copies there. So basically what this shows is, so in Development Services, and that's this top chart, we track all the impact fees that we take in. And we've narrowed this information tonight really just to traffic and parks, because those are kind of the big ones for the community. I mean, that we also take impact fees in for fire and for general government and for police. But I think we started this conversation with, well, if we're, if we're taking monies in for, for transportation and parks, where are we spending those dollars? All right? So, so the top part of the chart here shows where we've taken monies in. And if you go back, if you look at this, $576,000, and, and go back and look at what's on the pie chart from the dashboard, they're basically aligned, they're actually off by, by the Marriott Spring Hill Suites. And the reason is, is that we took that money in before the Central Issaquah plan was adopted. So in the dashboard, we didn't count for it, because it actually predated Central Issaquah plan, even though geographically the hotel is in Central Issaquah. But we thought we were answering the question of how much have we taken in since the plan has been adopted? So it shows up on finances chart, which is this table, because they did it geographically. But it was a little bit of a, the nuance of a little bit of a different question from this committee. So there is a, so from a traffic standpoint, there's like a $72,335 discrepancy between what you see in the pie chart and this $576,000 number. So I just wanted to be transparent on that. All right. So the second table here, and this is, this is traffic, and then parks is the little fine print down at the bottom. So from a transportation standpoint, this identifies the projects that we've queued up to spend mitigation monies on, either have or are going to.
That are in the 2018 to 2022 capital improvement plan that are within the Central Issaquah area. So we pulled those projects out and put them in this spreadsheet.
Yes.
Okay.
So these are a subset of, of the bigger transportation improvement program, just projects within CIP. So this is, this was, this was basically what you guys asked for. Now, it's not, I think you guys asked for a level of specificity that we can't deliver today. And that was, okay, so like if we take money in from, let's say Gateway, where does it get spent? And really what the city does is we have a mandate from the state that we spend that, those impact fees within 10 years. So, so we need to know that we're tracking that money and that we actually spend it before that time elapses, because otherwise we're supposed to return it. And so we age those impact fees to know when to spend them, but finance doesn't track them based on who paid. So to answer the question, for example, where did Gateway's money go? We don't know the answer to that without actually going back in and looking at every individual project. And so one of the things that I know finance will be asking for next year is a new software package that will allow them to do that. So that's a conversation for you guys for budget for next year, but for now, to come up with this table, finance actually had to go back and look at where the impact fees had been spent in the past. So that's what I know. I don't know much more than that. Jen's on vacation.
So what I heard that when we met and had a discussion about, so, was that we keep, we collect the information at application time, permitting time. So DSD and Public Works Engineering, we have that information about how much money is collected from which project.
Yes.
It doesn't get carried through to finance, because finance isn't required to figure out, to keep track of where the money is spent, just when the money is spent.
Yes.
And the, I think one of the points here of this chart is to show where that money has been spent. And any monies that have been taken in for transportation fees, impact fees, within this, from projects within the Central Issaquah area, any monies that we've spent so far have been spent on the large road project north of I-90. So, so that's, that's the, that's the second part of the information that I think is daylighted by this. Because when we first deliberated on and adopted the Central Issaquah plan, we talked about being able to have, you know, transportation mitigation monies to spend on projects within the Central Issaquah area. And so having this information as part of the budget each year will help us make decisions about how we want to spend that money. And it also, the separate piece that we talked about very briefly was, the state allows you to take in the money and spend it within a certain period of time. The local jurisdiction gets to decide how close in proximity, for example, do you want to spend that money to that project, where, you know, that, where that project is located? How, how close to that project do you want to spend that money? That's a policy question.
Right. Right. And so, for example, I think parks, which is much more simple, you know, what we've spent our money, our park money, our park impact fee money on recently, and you guys know this, is Central Park and Confluence Park. Neither of those are located in Central Issaquah. So, but we have also done park dedication in lieu of. So for example, Center Park by Atlas, that was a dedication and an improvement in lieu of getting park impact fees. So, so this is telling a good story. It gives you guys more information as you start to think about how to allocate capital projects, you know, from both a transportation and a park perspective, I think.
Mary Lou? I don't have a paper copy, and I can't read that, but it looked to me like there was some non-capacity spending. Oh, thanks. So how can non-capacity projects end up using mitigation money?
So I think the higher level question for that, a little bit higher, is we get, I think we probably want to talk at a future time about what all we want included in this chart. Because there were some, I asked a specific question about Central Issaquah, and what ended up on the chart and is still in the chart is projects that were done in Central Issaquah prior to the Central Issaquah plan, using non-Central Issaquah plan mitigation fees, which I objected to that information being there, because it's not relevant. It, it makes it look like we've done something with Central Issaquah plan impact fees that we haven't. So I think one of the questions is what we want these charts to look like, what information we want, want these charts to have.
Right.
And Mary Lou's question is a separate one, what, I'm not sure when we answer that.
What I would say is, so, without spending a lot of time with this, because I don't like finance stuff, is, so remember, we changed our, our concurrency model like three years ago, and we took, we used to charge a separate concurrency fee and an impact fee. And we just basically turned it into a traffic fee, so it's combined. So I don't know that, but the question is, is are the non-capacity projects predating three years ago?
I'm going to ask it a different way.
Okay.
As a council member, looking at this at budget time, I want to look at through the lens of transparency, that this growth, growth happened in this neighborhood, and it was supposed to provide X amount of amenities, including parks and new pieces of road. We collect $1.65 million or whatever it is, and I want to see that we spent it there, that we, and that we're not behind in using this money to fund other projects for other reasons, but that we're actually saying, we had $500,000 in extra parks money collected in Central Issaquah, it's going to go on a park in Central Issaquah, because that was the whole point, to finish these pieces.
So that's a policy. I think that's a policy conversation for the council, because that's not currently in policy.
Mm-hmm. Right. And for, and for me, the thing is, I want to look, right, that's the policy question, and we can all talk about that. I need to see the information in a transparent way, so I can see where we're spending the money, so then we can ask the policy question. But throwing stuff like overlay on here, that does, that muddles, muckies it all up. The same with projects that were done before Central Issaquah, that muckies it up, too. It makes it hard to, makes it hard to be transparent.
Paul?
I don't have any comments.
Okay. So I guess the final comment I have is that I, I want to say thank you to Jen and whoever helped her pull all this together. I know it was a heavy lift, it was a lot of work, and I think in the end, we learned that we have a gap and that we can improve on that. And hopefully that budget will see that request for monies to buy software that will be able to just automatically generate this information for us. I think it's really important that we have it.
Right.
So thank you for continuing to dog that for me, Keith.
Nothing to see anyone.
Okay. I don't see that we have anything else on our agenda, do we? Anything else for... On that? Okay. Sure.
It's hard to understand exactly what the aim was for these charts before you all had your conversations. So my question was, coming from the community lens, how much goodness are these developments providing the community, which I think is a great sales pitch that you need? I wanted to see how much they, that park mitigation money was. I want to know how much the Gateway roundabout is, so that we can understand as a large number, how much mitigation money we're getting as a whole. So to me, that's a missing piece in here.
Thank you. Steve?
He's just putting paper down.
He's just putting paper down. Oh. Anybody else? No? Okay. So we have no more business, and we are adjourned.